You're listening to TG1F, an F1 podcast with Kate and Nicole.
We're your hosts. I'm Kate.
And I'm Nicole.
And this is our show where we talk about all things Formula One.
And a lot of things that are not Formula One, too.
Because why the heck not?
This is your formal invitation to a weekly hangout with your F1 BFFs where we'll talk on-track action, off-track gossip, and throw in some hot pop culture topics.
It doesn't matter if you're a seasoned F1 fan, a curious newbie, or literally just think the drivers are hot, because they are. There's a little something in this podcast for everyone.
Speaking of which, did you hear what happened this week?
No, tell me about it.
It's lights out and away we go, baby. Welcome, Abby. We're so excited to finally have you on the pod. It's been
Thank you.
At long last. A long last. It's been like a year or so in the making, I feel like at this point. So it's fantastic to finally, I mean, the three of us are constantly yapping and chit-chatting online and on the phone. So it only made sense to kind of put pen to paper metaphorically and talk with a recorded background.
Or put a voice to a mic.
Exact, perfect. There you go.
Oh, my god. You guys are
Want to say, Nicole and I have both been talking about this like right beforehand, but like excuse our incredible vocal fry today. This is not, I'm, we're not cosplaying as the Kardashians. We both have literally been breathing almost exclusively airplane air for the past like two weeks and we both got on, we were like, hello. For everyone listening also, please, please forgive us. Please extend us some grace for our, for our intense vocal fry today.
But also, we gotta give you guys, the legends, a big shout out because you guys are still doing this. If I had, I do also have a podcast.
Their wishes.
I also do have a podcast and I would absolutely go, no, I'm not doing this today. But the fact that you guys on and off week got me on here. It's, it's an honor. It's an honor to be here.
Yeah, I mean, we, every week, every week, rain or shine, race or no race, we're on the mic. Because we give the people what they want.
Exactly.
They say, we want to hear from Kate and Nicole and we deliver.
We give what, what we think the people want, which is us still here.
And I think that's the only way to keep going, though.
Yet, so we're still here.
No, that's the only way to keep it sustainable because you give the people what you think what they want. People don't know what they want until Kate and Nicole give it to them.
So true. That's so true. All right, enough about us. Abby, let's hear a little bit about you. Give us your 30 second about Abby.
Oh, my god, 30 seconds.
You do so much.
I will try to keep it very short.
Actually, it could be 30 minutes if you want it to be. We have no time limit here, so.
I am a strategy consultant and an ex-engineer in the automotive and tech and sports industries. I've done quite a bit, like you said. If you start going deep diving into the industries I've worked in, I think I can come out with 20 different ones. I've done marine, I've done filtration, I've done generators. But I come from a background in engines and cars, then tech. And most recently, I've been a strategy consultant at the firm McKinsey and Company. And I, behind the scenes, I've always been a problem solver for big Fortune 500 corporations. And that's what I do. I go into a lot of different projects that I usually can't talk about publicly and go and solve problems professionally. That's the only way to explain it. I also have a media platform. We've got a lovely team over at Racing Forces. You'll probably find it somewhere in the show notes. We've kept it a much nicheer podcast. We talk about the business and the culture of Formula One and sports in general, sometimes the car industry, because that's kind of our backgrounds in this, in this space. And we try to take the veil behind a lot of these topics as well as talk from the industry professional perspective. So, yeah, that's, was that 30 seconds or did that go into a minute? I don't know.
I mean, perfect, but long story short, Abby is way smarter than Kate and I. And Racing Forces is a much more in-depth technical look into the sporting world. Whereas obviously, Abby, you know, on this podcast, we just chat shit a lot of the time.
No, I think you guys are experts in what you do.
Very excited for you to bring kind of an element of professionalism to our pod this week.
She's bringing actual knowledge and research to this podcast.
Actually, we've hired Abby to come, listen, come on the podcast and consult and do her consulting work.
Sure, absolutely. I will be a consultant.
How to be better.
Yes, let's do that.
Problem solving for us, AKA all the things that we say that are wrong. Obviously, we'll be like, actually, that's not true, Ellen.
Exactly.
All right, so let's talk F1 stuff. Right before we did intros, Abby, you brought up Chicago Grand Prix. Now, this has been a rumor in the making for unseriously like two years. But I feel like in the past six months, it's become more serious of a rumor. But I don't think I ever really thought it would be a, like a serious, serious rumor until today.
Yeah.
And probably two years ago, probably in one of our earliest episodes, people asked us questions and they're like, where, where's your dream F1 race in America? And I said, Chicago, because not only am I from Chicago, but the lakefront is beautiful and Lake Shore Drive would kind of be an iconic slay for an F1 track. I know we do NASCAR there now. But the museum campus right on the lake, I think would be stunning. But I will say, I'm not psyched about a fourth US race.
I think Chicago, it's so interesting, right? These rumors have come in waves. I think we found out about Chicago when suddenly on Twitter, people started finding a Chicago Grand Prix being registered, a trademark being registered by F1. And what I discovered when that was happening, that all of F1's trademarks are based out of the Netherlands for some reason. The entity that files for it, because first when I went and looked, I'm like, somebody from the Netherlands is filing this. This is not F1. No, it turns out, all their trademarks, the entity that files for it is based in Netherlands. Weird tax reasons, I'm sure. However, this is again, recent in the 12 hours, everybody, there's these rumors. And I was in another podcast earlier today and I, this industry is so incestuous. I'm so sorry. There's no other word to call it. So mostly 95% of the time. Rumors, rumors are true. Rumors are usually true is what we've learned with time. Most others, it's not.
Let's, let's talk about the Adrian Newey rumor that happened only two weeks ago. People were like, can't possibly be true, can't possibly be true. 12 hours later, turns out.
Single time.
Every single time.
Happened with Mattia, it happened with Gunther, it happened. It's like, it always happens anytime that there's a rumor about something. And people are like, no, no, I don't think so. It always ends up being true. Lewis to Ferrari, that was like a year-long rumor that everyone said wasn't true and then it came true.
That one, I think the Zag guys made happen. I feel like everybody was like, Lewis to Ferrari, Lewis to Ferrari. Ferrari was like, oh, should we just go get him? And I think that's how it happened, the other way around, but.
The powers of manifestation. You say enough things out loud.
That's how it happens.
Enough times.
Will happen.
It becomes truth, which is why we're manifesting and we're starting the rumor on the pod that Daniel Ricciardo is becoming a manager post-F1 and getting One Direction back together.
That is okay. I would totally support that.
Repeat that over and over again, it's gonna be true.
And I'm sure Daniel listens to the pod already.
Of course, he does.
And even if he doesn't, we are speaking it into reality.
That makes a lot of sense.
Someone is listening.
Somebody is listening, somebody on Daniel's crew. Again, we've learned with the six degrees of Kevin Bacon, F1 is two degrees of Kevin Bacon, so like, everybody knows everybody. So we'll hear somebody on Daniel's team is listening. So whoever is listening, please send it to him. There you go.
You know what to do.
Yeah, you know what to do. But going back to Chicago Grand Prix, right? There's pros and cons to this. Pros, I think what F1 is really trying to do is trying to make it as much of an American series than a European series. Because they've invested 200 and what, like 60 or 80 million in an, in an actual building in Vegas, which is going to serve as their Vegas offices. Nobody makes that kind of investment if there's no long-term plans here. We also know there's a trademark for New York that's been filed.
Yep.
And so it does make a lot of sense that if you did, let's say Miami, then Montreal, then Chicago, it would put a lot of less pressure for F1 to like move their personnel around the world so many times. Logistically, it would make sense. Mental health-wise, it would make, and physical health-wise for the people involved in the sport, it would make a lot of sense. However, is the racing product going to be as good? And again, I think that there are multiple products, right? The online product is the race itself. That brings them money through ESPN, Sky Sports, blah, blah, blah. However, there's also the offline product, which is the party that Miami was. That is not really visible on the screens, but people
Right.
get it. And that's where they actually make the money. Are we going to feel any of these races as a novelty anymore? I don't think so. But also, for somebody who has gone to Austin now five or six years, I'm tired of Austin. Take me somewhere else.
Yeah.
Take me somewhere else.
Here's my thought on Chicago, is I feel as though Chicago would have the possibility of being the most American race.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Midwest, baby, Midwest.
I think about, like Miami is just a party. Like, it's, the food is great, like everything is, is great. But it is very much more of like
It's a coastal elite situation.
Vegas and Miami are so corporate. They are corporate events for people to bring their high-paying customers to and schmooze and, and just network, and that's what it is.
Yeah, it's, you're going there for the experience of the actual race you're going to see and be seen. And like, you're not really going to Miami Grand Prix to be in Miami. Like, it's, it's far away. It's hard to like, kind of do all these things. It's all about like the events that are happening around. Like, you're not really, if you're going to the Miami Grand Prix, you're not going and you're not gonna like experience Miami.
It's like a New York Fashion Week thing. People don't go to New York Fashion Week to see New York. They go for the fashion.
Right. Like, you think that Miami is trying because they are, like, the teams are doing more things and like the win would, like, they're trying to bring in more of like the Miami vibe, but it's still, it's events. It's like going to do these things. Austin, I think, is the only one that's kind of close because there aren't all of these like crazy events. And like, I feel like when people go to Austin, they are kind of like going to explore the city, exploring the food, going out, like, going to like the local bars and stuff, going to eat like barbecue. But it's all, again, I think Austin is very like spread out. And you're not like, the track isn't super accessible to the city. Vegas is great because it's in the city. And so like, we were talking about how like, it's easy to do all these other things. And like, the whole weekend, you feel like you're at the race because you're in the city and like, you're looking at the track. But Vegas is not America. Vegas is literally food from everywhere, like cultures from everywhere. It is, it is like a microcosm of the world in one city in the US. It doesn't feel like America. Chicago, though, you kind of get the best of all of these in one, where if the track is like in downtown in the city, you'll have the same vibes as Vegas of you, anywhere you are in the city that weekend, you'll feel like you're at the race. You don't even have to have tickets to the race, but you'll feel like you're there. Chicago has incredible food. And what is Chicago known for? Quintessential American food. Pizza, hot dogs, like
Yeah, I was thinking like corn dogs at the race. Like, that's like, get a Six Flags sponsorship. Like, that's the race you do it at.
You're going and you're gonna experience a very specific culture because I feel like Chicago has such a unique food, food culture. But it's like, what people think of when they think of America is like pizza, hot dogs, burgers, like, and I feel like that's very much the Chicago mindset of food. And like, you'll have obviously other things from, that are very specific. But I feel like this has the possibility to be like the quintessential American race where people will go, they will visit Chicago. They'll actually like become immersed in the city and it will be more of like a well-rounded weekend. And we'll have the opportunity to have F1 kind of dial into what actually makes America, America. Not like just everything is cowboys like in Austin. And like, everything is like BBLs and celebrities like in Miami. And like, the fucking sphere in Vegas. Like, I feel like Chicago is just much more authentic. And I feel like F1 will have a chance to make it a more authentic experience.
Chicago has the opportunity to be similar to Montreal. Like Montreal is a really fun race because it's easily accessible from downtown Montreal. It's a beautiful track. Like, it's used as a park when it's not, you know, during the F1 season. And like, it's right on the Lawrence Seaway and it's beautiful. And you can do all these other things when you're not at the track. And so I feel like Chicago really has the potential to be a really fun and ideally not as expensive race as some of, as like Las Vegas and Miami.
I think the other part of this is also the downside when I think about it. Is first, the locals in Chicago, they didn't ask for this. And what a race becomes at the end of the day is on the promoter and much less on F1, the organization. Because I've been in Austin, what, this is my sixth year in Austin, uh, living here. And I've tried to had a lot of local conversations about this on why sometimes Austin feels a little bit disconnected. And what I hear from Cota is because it's 25 miles away from Austin downtown, the goal has always been creating a mini Cota-esque development. They are making condos out there. There's hotel permits in process. They have a karting track. They have plans for an amusement park coming out there. So they want to make a small all-American town outside Austin and just have it all be there. That is a much, much longer runway that'll take a long, much time to get created. Like 30 more years, 20 more years, so like for it to become a whole establishment on its own. But that's what Cota's management's going for. So that makes sense to me. They want to make it an all-American like thing that you get away from the city from, but when you come back, your hotels are still here. And people understand the need for it because we've got a Ritz Carlton coming up on rainy right now. And people understand what South by Southwest and Formula One being to the town. So it's not working either way that they want to do. However, Chicago, I do see what exactly what you're saying with Montreal, right? It is that opportunity to create an all-American race. And they do that with IndyCar and NASCAR right now. One of the best races that NASCAR does is in Chicago. And they have some expertise doing this. It just is that this promoter depends on who the promoter is. And what are they trying to offer differently? The fourth American race would be great for even viewers, like technically. We don't like it because we're used to watching it all at the Europe and have it be this really such an unknown thing that we put on a pedestal back in Europe and we put some luxury to this. Bringing it down now, four races means a couple of, two really big drawbacks that I could see. It's gonna become this rotating schedule. Now that you have so many tracks on the calendar, you can't go to 30 races in a year. Some races are not gonna like, it may be like, it's not Miami this year. It's Vegas, Austin and Chicago. Another year, Austin doesn't get to be on the schedule because corporate bunny is gonna keep, I think Miami and or Vegas alive. So it's gonna be that tracks will suffer. And the second part of it is, you are now making, giving one country four races. Are you really a premium product? You're not. That exclusivity and everything that F1 rides on, it's the same thing. It's a Chanel bag. If you flood the market with so many Chanel bags, is it really that $9,000 bag anymore? No.
Hundred percent.
And so, two things, I think those are two real risks. But I'm sure Formula One is thinking about all of that. I just don't know what that answer to both of that is.
Well, we, we can hope that they are, but like, maybe they're just like, hey, all of the US races give us so much money, why wouldn't we add a fourth one? Because it'll just make us more money.
I mean, eventually, it's just gonna be, F1 is gonna be an American sport and all.
You're like, hey, IndyCar, you never got, you never picked up. F1's coming in and being just like a more elite version of IndyCar.
And that is completely the truth because I've heard from a lot of people who are in and around the IndyCar world, that IndyCar's management, I don't think a lot of people know this. IndyCar, when Penske bought it from their previous owners, the series came free to the track. The track was what they paid money for. The series was free. They came with it. And there's been a lot of offers on the table to the Penske family to sell it out and that has not happened. This is one-year-old news, by the way. I have not kept track of it. But that did happen a year ago. People came with a couple of offer. I heard it was a three-digit million number. But it was still much cheaper. Like Roger Penske could have like made the money back on how much he paid for the track easily by selling the series separately. But I think there is pride, old values. Like, I don't know if you've been to an Indy 500 race. It's that vibe, right? Corn dogs, ring like your own coolers in your booze with it. It is that all-American race. And there's that pride that comes with it.
And I will say, Miami also had corn dogs this year.
Miami blew it out of the park.
Also sushi.
The Miami food was I've ever had. I wanted more corn, less dog than what they gave me.
It was a really girthy, it was a really girthy sausage.
I saw it and I wasn't expecting, I took a bite and I wasn't expecting the dog to be so big. I was like, that's a big
I'll tell you this, it was a hand, I think it was, it was a fresh-made hot dog. Like, it had herbs and spices in there. Like, it was not like a kosher.
I'll say, it was like a corn sausage.
Yeah.
Herbs and spices and a corn dog.
But I will say, they were, they were doing their American shit. They had some corn dogs.
Listen, like I said in last week's, two corn dogs, they were like toofy long. They were like really long.
They were longer than my head. We can put a, we can put a photo that we took of me holding the corn dog next to my head and it's longer than that.
So two corn dogs and one strawberry lemonade, $57. So like, a premium corn dog.
It was, like you said, herbs and spices, man. They gotta like, take that couple dollars back. But at the end of the day, I do worry because I think they are focusing a lot on the offline, the in-person experience right now. So go look up the 10K. I am nerdy in a way that every year when Formula One comes out with annual financial statements, I do a good read of it. I go, that's a weekend reading for me. I like to read where they made their money last year. And hey, the profit margins are still pretty slim. I'm all for more profit margins. Being a girl that's worked for blue chip companies her entire life. But what I wonder is, and I go back to product strategy again and again and again. And I'm on my way to become a tech founder this year, so all I do is now think about, how are you doing product? And for me is that they've understood the profit margins on the offline product are way more. Because it's the same thing as what ESPN, like, they are paying, ESPN is paying them 75 million a year. That's nothing, based on like what their annual revenue was, 3.2 billion or something. So like, they're not making enough money from people at home. All the money is coming from sponsorships and people on site. So that's what they're trying to do because at the end of the day, the paying power of the public, as much as we try to cry in this country that we're all poor, when we use a frame of reference through the world, I think we're doing better than a lot of other countries. And that's why people go and pay and still, like discretionary spending is like our fun money. Like Taylor Swift and Beyonce concerts kept the economy alive last year. So America, even when they're falling apart, are spending fun money. So Formula One's like, why not? But that goes back to like, hey, are you, is it gonna make good racing? We just don't know. And I'm sorry, I know Nicole, you're from Chicago. I absolutely hate Chicago.
Really?
Fightin' words.
I don't know why. It's the vibe. Maybe I didn't enjoy my time in the Midwest. It is not a logical thing. It's just too windy. It's just too windy and it takes my like backpacks and purses away and I have
When did you go?
I used to live in the Midwest, 14 to 20.
Okay, you lived in Indiana.
I used to go every year, three times a year to Chicago.
Okay, so, well, you lived in Indiana, the worst part of the Midwest.
Probably true.
So, so, but also like, here's the thing, you haven't been to Chicago with me personally.
That is true, that is true. Maybe you already
Rookie mistake, rookie mistake number one. Number two is that that's crazy because I feel like a lot of people that I've talked to have always been like, Chicago has surprised me because I thought I wasn't gonna like it and I actually really did like it. I fight tooth and nail to New Yorkers who are like, oh, Chicago. And I'm like, Chicago is yeah, basically the same as New York.
It's a cleaner New York. It's a cleaner New York.
It's cleaner, it's nicer. And like, everything's open till the crack of dawn. You can get any type of food. The transportation is good, the cost of living is cheaper.
That is true.
The lake is actually swimmable. It's like nice and it looks beautiful in the spring. There's, we have winning sports teams. Maybe not right now, but in some years, we have had winning sports teams. Like, we get all the major activities. So there are, there are a lot of
You're selling Chicago back to me, actually.
I love it there.
I gotta believe it.
I don't know a single person from Chicago that I'm like, damn, I don't like that person. Like, everyone from Chicago rocks.
That is true. And I love Nicole. So, hey, I will go to the Chicago race just because Nicole's from there.
Will go and I will change your mind.
That's okay.
Or there will be severe consequences for not being able to sell you on Chicago.
Like, there will be, at least we'll know if we're really friends or not. At least we'll know that, right at the end of the day. So, back to Chicago.
Went to Chi, let me say this. I'll say this in defense of Chicago. I went to Chicago for my first time with Nicole, peak pandemic, couldn't do anything. Literally could barely, could barely do anything at all. And I had the time of my damn life. I was like, I can't wait to come back. I frickin' love it here. I did get COVID on the plane home, but I said, worth it. Chicago was dope. Like, we couldn't even do anything. We went to the like, we bare, we like walked skirted the zoo, basically, and like saw some ducks and just walked around outside and had, like, it was just the best time of my life. And then I went back post-pandemic again with Nicole and all of her friends that are now my friends from Chicago. And it was even better because we got to do things. And it was like the best. Like, I love Chicago. I was sitting in the taxi with Nick and I'm looking up Zillow listings. I'm like, are we moving to Chicago? And he was like, no, we're not. But it could be fun.
There you go.
Like, I would
Here's the thing is that like
Never consider leaving the New England area.
I don't worry about the, the, a Chicago race like being good because Lollapalooza has been going on for 25 years in the city. Every year we do Taste of Chicago, which is a huge festival. And like, on the grounds there, like Millennium Park and, you know, Grant Park and this area, which it would likely be, constantly hosting events. And the people who live there are pretty used to it. Like, all summer long, there's street closures, there's things like going on over there that it wouldn't be like so much of a burden. Whereas I feel like with Miami Gardens, like, this is a disruption during a time that is not usually a disruption for them.
The, like highway on the side with cars still going as tracks are on there and that's a weird jarring.
Right, exactly. And so like, for it to be downtown on the lakefront, like, I, I think that people would generally like, it would fall into place pretty quickly. I wouldn't have any worries about that. I think what I would worry about is similar to, if it, if they have similar rules to Vegas where like, in Vegas, all of the bars and restaurants had to pay F1 a fee to show the race at their bars or restaurants. I want, it was like $500,000. It was like a crazy amount of money. I don't remember the exact amount. But like, if they tried to pull that shit in Chicago, I'll tell you what. No one's paying it and, but they're still gonna be showing that race. Like, it's gonna be a whole, these are people who put chairs and parking cones in front of their parking spaces during the winter and will physically fight you if you try and move it. So like, I just don't think that they're ready for this type of smoke if they try and come in and like If they try and come in and like make it this experience.
I think Lou Malnati himself from his grave will come and like pound you in your head.
Which is trash, by the way.
Oh, I don't like Giordano's either. What's the good pizza? Deep dish pizza?
Pequod's.
See, I've not like There you go. So what else? What else do we wanna talk about?
All right, enough about Chicago. People are like, enough, we get it.
It's been forty fucking minutes of talking about Chicago.
I'm screaming, I put F one in its chugi era, but it autocorrected to chubby era. And I was like, who's chubby? What? No, F one being in its chugi era, we were kind of talking about this in a group chat earlier, we're like, what sort of going on with the celebrities that the, the teams invite, like especially for the Miami race? Like James Charles was there, like Camila Cabello, like all of these people who are like arguably not kind of the F one demographic mass market, like it's supposed to be elevated.
Not super relevant. It's, it's interesting because I feel like we used to see like everyone was going to these races, like you had people that were like in their peaks, like, I mean, Lewis had fucking every Victoria's Secret angel was coming through the garages to see him and like that was when they were like in their prime. We had Tom Brady at like the prime of his career coming through. I mean, he's still
He was there, but he was with William, so I think if that like means literally anything.
His prime, like he's getting roasted. That's like, that's where he's getting his bag right now. It's like he's doing the roast of Tom Brady. And like, I just feel like they used to have these people that was like, big fucking deal, huge celebrities going, like people that I, I feel like people were like psyched to kind of see them there. And now it just kind of feels like bottom of the barrel, like people that don't really make sense. Like, it's the James Charles of it all. I'm sorry, I'll James Charles with Max Verstappen. That was the most bizarre thing I've ever seen. And so
What's he doing?
I think first of all, there's a couple of different reasons and sorry, being a consultant, my brain just frameworks everything. There's a couple of things that are going on here. First is it happens every year in three locations now. It's not just one year and like, you have to realize that also I've been trying to figure out the calendar piece of it all too, right? And there is I don't know if people realize this, a lot of like ultra wealthy networks have a specific migration pattern. Season starts as like Miami or like officially summer starts in Monaco, then they go around. And every time like, and season ends in Abu Dhabi because everybody is like they're ending their winter in the Middle East. So like, it follows some of that ultra wealthy migration patterns. Because I know people here in Texas will fly to Colorado, people from New York will go to Miami. I know people from Midwest will go to Arizona. There's like these cross area ultra wealthy migration patterns that it follows. So it has to do with availability, who's available, right? But also, so many people have been canceled. Cancel culture is real and alive. And so he's been canceled for so long, they're like, we're out of everybody. That's the first reason, like we have to bring some of them back. But I can tell you a very specific example here. A friend of mine does this specifically, tries to book people to these teams. Most of the times
That's a job that you can have.
But he doesn't get paid for it. He has other jobs, but this is kind of a side hustle because it lets him be in a lot of important rooms. It's a very interesting venture and it's like your Rolodex, right? Your Rolodex is worth something.
Tell him, can we get him on the pod next?
I, I think he likes staying behind the scenes, but I will talk I think he's a man of the people. He's a man of the people, so he'll do it. So he and I were trying to see who we could invite in Austin. And through a mutual contact, we had Zachary Levi. This is before him almost getting canceled, by the way. This is before then, right? And so we were trying to get Zachary Levi, he wasn't like, this is before Shazam two has come out. Right? Uh, pre pandemic, post pandemic, before he's gone on all of these like weird brands on the internet. And so we were trying to talk, try and get him, but no team wanted him. He would, would have been available, I think, one of the teams had finally one of the bottom of the grid teams was ready to give him a two day pass. He wasn't available because he was trying to get ready for Shazam promos and stuff like that. It didn't happen. Last year, same thing, he made himself available. And we know somewhere along the line, it was like, no, we're not getting him. He's been canceled enough. Like there was a public relations office somewhere, I think we're all, when the list goes, they finally have a view. But then we were like, well, Nelson Piquet is still allowed. Or like all of these weird other people are still out. So we didn't get really the understanding and eventually I think the track ended up inviting on one of their hospitality suites to Zachary Levi, but F one said specifically no. But then I know Glenn Powell was in the mix before Glenn Powell really blew up. And so that was a conversation we were having. And there were teams who didn't know Glenn Powell were, like, and wouldn't want to invite it. So it's like, almost this there's this cottage industry behind the scenes where like
That's so interesting. I need, I need to know more about how, like, is it just kind of like a pool of celebrities and the teams like pick names out of a hat of like who they get to invite? Like, how does this work?
It's like, there are like three levels of middlemen allow, involved. It's really, you know, something that we say in consulting, that even if you're working for one of the biggest corporations out there. You are not working for the corporation, you're working with the person you're working with. So it's that PR person or the hospitality person, then their contact. And then some publicist for the celebrity who knows this contact. And it's so decentralized. It's about like, and in the past, apparently it's worked in a way that celebrities came, got a lot of like, because of the exclusivity, they came, there was no money involved. And they would get some access and it would be a very handshake understood kind of thing. We're giving you access, you're giving us some press, it works. I think it's changing now. Influencers are coming and their job is just showing up what six figure asks. And sometimes teams are like, oh my God, to reach this demographic, we may need to get this person. Sometimes it's still, oh, I know this person and it's coming in. And those are the mechanics of F one that I don't necessarily understand. I know a lot of these instances. I don't necessarily understand how that works, really, because
So like I'm, yeah, like I'm picturing like a pool of celebrities, but it's also like, do those celebrities need to like say, hey, I'm interested in attending F one? Here are the races that I'm available. Tinder, they're swiping on each other. I'm picturing in my brain, um, what's that movie? What's that movie? You'll have to be more descriptive than that.
The movie with Drew Barrymore and uh Jimmy Fallon.
Oh, Fever Pitch.
Fever Pitch, when he's like auction, he's like, oh, I'm at my like draft, basically. And he's like, and people are like, oh, I want Yankees game on this day, like I want this. And he's like, okay, well, let me choose. Like, what are you gonna give me for this? What are you gonna give me for that? And like, that's, I feel like F one choosing which celebrities based on like which races One person is choosing it, right? It is like team, brand, race, have they been there before? What kind of media aspect, like somebody Red Bull may like somebody, but Sauber may not like that person, vice versa. Mercedes has a really high bar for who they end up inviting. And they've always held that, like apparently Mercedes is the hardest to get. When, I think it was in the Lewis winning era, but I don't know what that is right now. But it's also who your sponsors?
Celebrity Mercedes had was.
Camila Cabello, this in Miami, she was with Ferrari and she was Mercedes. And also
The bar is in hell from Mercedes now.
Also, I have uncovered this, and this is by my pure powers of deduction. I would love that nobody has actually uh confirmed this to me, so take it as, as it is. But Red Bull Red Bull is running this entire thing through CA. I did meet a ton of CA people at the race. I think Formula One also has some CA relationships. CA being the best agency out there also, and WME and UTA don't really do sports that well. CA knows they have one of the biggest roster in Hollywood and they have the biggest roster in sport. So there are CA agents embedded in a lot of these conversations. And a lot of Red Bulls, you start going through people Red Bull has invited. Ninety-five percent of the times they had a CA connection. I've gone back and tracked all of them. So that's how you say, like the way Nicole, you put it, it's a swiping mechanism. And it's incredibly personal swiping mechanism. And I think that's how it's not just F one booking that works that way. I think a lot of celebrity appearance booking, it's that same mechanism. Who is holding the roster? It's like Anna Wintor going and saying, I don't like them, I don't like them, I don't like them. But they also have to be like, okay, I think I'm gonna pay at the Met Gala and I wanna be seen here. It's both ways because I just heard somewhere, uh John Oliver saying he's been invited in the past, he declines every year. And Anna has invited him and Sean Oliver thinks it's against his personal values, so he doesn't go. So it's that how I think celebrity appearances generally work. It's a swiping mechanism. So I think there's fatigue on one side. Uh, on the celebrity side, and everybody wants to do something novel and new on the team side. They're like, oh, who's, has he been there before? No, we don't want them. At this point, everybody has been to an F one race, if they're a celebrity. You have to then be like, is he, is he gone away from our zeitgeist memory? Camila Cabello is not coming back very soon.
You know who we have not seen on a race in a very long time who used to be a staple? Dax Shepard, who literally was like a huge fan, created DRS, his podcast about F one. I don't think I've seen him at a race in
No, I saw him in Austin last year.
In Vegas, he was in
He was in Austin as well, so he's just probably taking Miami off. He'll be back. He probably just took one race back and Dax has a whole podcast uh related to it. I met him
We haven't seen Shakira in a while. What happened to Shakira and Louis dating rumors?
Broke up. I think she's dating somebody else. I think it's done. So it's all of that. I think it's very much a microcosm, like if you looked at and again, my business words, you segmented that market and saw how many people were available, they've just run out of people at this point. Wouldn't it be interesting? James Charles and Red Bull, Red Bull knows how to create moments really well. It's got us talking route right now, is it? Nobody's talking about Zizu, Zidane being at Aston, even though he's an Alpine ambassador. Nobody cares. People care about James Charles. I think pro- provocative clicks and noise Everybody's rage baiting, like you're saying. And that's what's happening. So F one in its chugi era.
Hi sisters. Anyway, okay, let's talk a little bit about silly season. So there, it's, we're kind of kicking off silly season. A couple of episodes ago, I told Kate that I think we'd have at least one announcement before Montreal. We have two at this point. This was before, this was after Lewis, so we weren't counting Lewis. And so there are some rumors circulating on the internet right now. And one, I have three.
Okay, let's go.
One is that Mick potentially to Alpine in twenty twenty five. Uh, Joe is allegedly being courted by Haas. And uh Carlos has allegedly declined his Audi contract for twenty twenty six. So there's a lot of speculation going around right now.
Well, there's also the rumor about uh Cami Antonelli being granted his super license to either go to Williams or Mercedes.
Correct. But allegedly he won't be able to do it until late August because there is all of these rules about having to be eighteen now. And Max has been very vocal against this, even though he has the same, he has the appropriate amount of super license points to actually race. So we'll see.
So silly season rumors, let's start with Carlos. I absolutely think it's the right decision for Carlos to not go to Audi in twenty twenty five. Because if there's anybody with any real momentum in the sport right now, yes, it's Lando, but it's really Carlos. Carlos is showing
I think Carlos over Orlando for sure.
Yeah, because Carlos is showing us what consistency gets you in the sport versus anything else. Because there is this thing in sports, which is consistency versus the promise, right? There was so much promise to Daniel Ricciardo, that his promises got him so far in his career. And in sports, that like heavily over indexes on where you end up signing a deal. However, I think Carlos is the only one that has shown us that consistency gets you up, gets you up the door, gets you up the door. Show up every day. And that's the great thing about sportsmanship. You see all these life lessons being played out in real, real life. He's had the money, he's had the consistency. He didn't come with natural talent. He's that CEO story who like bloomed later in his career versus a Mark Zuckerberg, right? So Carlos is, if he goes now to Audi, Audi has so many unknowns. It's really Sauber until it becomes Audi in twenty twenty six next year. He doesn't win as many races. He can't demand the kind of, I think what he's making like a base eight with bonuses twelve, like, let's call it somewhere he's making from eight to twelve million. He's in a position right now to go to Mercedes or Red Bull and demand like a twenty to twenty five. Versus if he took, Sauber doesn't have that kind of money first. To give him until Audi comes on board, even if it's lucrative. He, we've seen what Mick's career, like what Haas did to Mick's career. He could have done well. We see what Danny's career went in bad teams. Like, it really is to give the driver that the car that they can drive, it's not one versus the other. So like, if that match doesn't happen as quickly, Carlos's career is over. And Carlos is doing the, Carlos knows he can call up Audi because of daddy signs and go any moment he wants to go. That's not something, money is not, even if Audi gives him like
He's at his Danny Rick crossroads right now of like, I mean, obviously he was like forced to make the decision to leave teams, but like, I feel like he has the conundrum like where he could make the decision, he could make like a Lewis decision, where Lewis chose to go to Mercedes and it was a great career decision. Or he can make a Danny decision where we know that Danny makes literally the worst decision. Anytime he has the opportunity to make a choice, he's gonna make the wrong one. And I think that Carlos has like, is at this crossroads or like he can either choose, cause I think he kind of has the pick of the field right now. Like, I think he can go to
I think he's going Mercedes. In my head, I think he's going Mercedes. Because he could go Red Bull, I don't know, right? It depends.
Either one of
Yeah, either one of them. The thing is that Danny has a problem of wanting to come off as the hero. He really wants to be, and I think he's learned it now. At this point, if he's not learned in his career, I don't know when he will. So like Daniel, I hope you've learned by now. But Lewis does very measured moves. He knows where there's that hero opportunity and loyalty. And Danny is just like, needs to do some self-work. He needs to go and do some Vipassana meditation and then be like, I am worth it. You know, like all what the self-help girlies are telling themselves on TikTok? I think Daniel needs a little bit of that. And it's also like the people around you are also guiding you. It's never done. You and I, like three of us, we chat a lot and we get opinions Like three of us, we chat a lot and we get opinions from each other. Like you are a sum total of the five people around you and that's the truth. We've seen Danny make some personal changes. We've seen Lewis make some personal changes in the last year around. Him as well, like he's gone back to a very old management. And these people are constantly checking and I think Carlos is being. Guided towards the most beneficial career. Because Carlos has had everything. He's got the looks, he's got, he's an utterly marketable driver. But he's never had his hero moment yet. So I think people are guiding him through the best commercial and the hero moment. But what I know from Carlos is he's got an innate sense of. What he needs, like an engineer to go and be like, these are the variables and I have. And these are the variables I need from a team because when I remember very differently about his McLaren journey and Amy's McLaren journey. Is that Carlos decided to move to walking immediately and was working at the factory and was trying to make that. Carlos does that always. Most of the drivers don't do that. He proactively always makes that decision. To go live where the factory is so that he can learn from the team. So Carlos, I think will go and go, go either give Max a fight in a Red Bull. Or try to become, because at this point, if he does go to Mercedes, he is Mercedes's golden child, even though. I think George Russell is your franchise player, like Charles Leclerc is Ferrari's franchise player. He can very well become the quarterback if Carlos came and did the decision, but he does know. Red Bull really well, so it could go in either way, but I do completely, being a person, the moment Audi comes to the grid. Driven an Audi since I was twenty-three, all teams are dead to me. I am an Audi franchise fan. Long term, but I think it's the right decision for him.
Yeah.
Super, super interesting talking about Danny and this like hero moment that he wants to have. And I think it's so interesting cuz you can totally see it, but I think that what separates. Him from someone like Lewis in, in like you kind of, sorry to say this, but. I think is that Danny wants the instant gratification, like he wants to come in and be the hero. Versus Lewis, who I think kind of like worked his way and like knows that like. Like you said, like the loyalty and the longevity is, is what's there. And like, I think. I mean, I think, I mean, number one, we, I think we can all agree that leaving Red Bull is Danny's worst mistake. Like he should have stayed there. He was in a good space and I think.
I think he had some really bad people around him who were indulging him in his need for instant gratification.
Yeah, but I, and I think, but I think his second worst decision. Was going to McLaren from Renault because I think at Renault, he had people that cared about him. He had a team principal that believed in him. And had promised to, had been working with him. He was like, this is gonna be a longer thing and we wanna work with you to be our franchise. Driver, like we want you to be the Renault driver. We wanna work with you on the car. We wanna do all these things. And we saw that that was like literally why Cyril was so upset when Danny left was because Cyril was like. Well, we told him this was gonna take a little longer and like it wasn't gonna be. In the first two years that we were gonna be fighting for championships, like it was gonna take a little bit longer. And I think that, I mean, I don't know, I don't, you, you never kind of know like butterfly effect, but like. I think that if Danny had stayed at Renault, he could have seen more success because he would have been working with the team more off, like longer. He had a team principal that was like fully behind him. And I think that maybe Renault, Alpine. Might have also seen better days because they had more of this like strong team backing. And I think that Danny's problem is that he. Is like.
He's jumping around because of his marketability and the, that's the saddest part about Carlos, right? Carlos has never had a choice. He's always been pushed out by somebody else.
Yeah, yeah.
Even though he's been consistent. So this time I think it's great that he's taking a step back and be like, wait, hold on. Even if Lewis is pushing me out of Ferrari, I actually have a choice to go get a bigger payday. And he's gonna be like the third, Lando's making twenty right now, so he can really quickly become. The third highest paid driver on the grid or like I think Charles is as, as at a thirty, I think, yeah. So he can like really go and start getting paid closer to Charles. Because Charles, whatever he does, he is their franchise guy. He's never gonna make any less. His career is almost set. They just keep giving him like extensions and that's where like really nice, you get to see patriarchy really well. It's like, okay. You must have to be really mediocre with us. We'll find it. And so.
Classic.
So in my head.
Going to fight us on this.
No, it's okay. I'm sorry. I love Charles. Charles is my second favorite driver after Lewis. But like I need to, like, I think with the love of your drivers.
We just had an episode where we said, Charles fans need to look in the mirror.
They do need to look in the mirror.
I know, but it's, it's one thing for like me to say that and me to be open about that. Mediocre and like I don't have to take it from other people. I can.
That is very true. That is very true. Like Charles probably knows that about himself. He probably still doesn't like being told that to his face.
You know, it's like, it's like you, like I can make fun of. My best friend, but like you can't make fun of my best friend. It's like that kind of situation.
But like Charles, Charles is also my best friend, so don't worry about it. Charles is my best friend over Carlos. I mean, this is constructive criticism. Even my lawyer gives me constructive criticism. So I think from here. I would say that Charles is definitely, I am not pro Kimi Antonelli getting the skip. Because we're not affording that same grace to women. We are not like Jessica Hawkins, who was faster than some of the rookies in the F one rookie test. Is not being afforded that opportunity.
Yeah.
I think Antonelli, seats are gonna be there for Antonelli. There's a lot of much more younger drivers. We need to stop getting into the habit of like getting one champion very like. We've, again, it's promise versus circumstances. And if we suddenly decide that this is the guy we're gonna back. Then there's so many more people that don't get the opportunity. I'm not pro Antonelli making the jump right now.
I also think like we're not get, affording that same luxury to women, but we're also not affording that same luxury to rookies anymore. Like we've had, I feel like we've seen so many rookies come in in the past couple of years that are like. Huge, like stories about them, like this kid is gonna like save F one. It's gonna be like, this is like the prodigal son of Formula One. And then they get like a year behind the wheel and they're like, oh, they didn't deliver like the championship. They're out. And like, I just think like Kimi Antonelli getting a seat next year. At such a young age, like where he's getting kind of awarded the super license for this. I don't think it spells good things for him and his career either. I think that that's.
Incredibly putting pressure.
They brought Logan up too soon. They brought Logan up too soon and look what's happening to him. They are wearing his.
What happened to Mick? Same thing.
Yeah.
Exactly. It's the Mick Schumacher like trajectory of like, where's Mick gonna be? Cuz I know another rumor we wanna talk about is like. Mick to Alpine. I don't think so. Like I, I think as much as people want to see Mick back on the grid. I think that teams are now looking to like the next generation. Like I think honestly, I think Mick had his chance. And I think it was too soon for him. And I think that it's really unfortunate for him. That he had the opportunity that he did and I, I don't see him coming back. As much as I would love to see him come back. I think they're gonna be like, well, there's actually much younger drivers that are like. Still driving right now and we wanna bring up like the fresh blood and I think that Mick's time is over and I think that's really unfortunate.
The real.
And I think if they do that for Kimi, it'll be the same thing.
The real rumor was that Mick was gonna be Audi with being that German guy. But we saw them go for Hulkenberg. Nobody saw that coming. But again. Hulkenberg is also that driver that never won a race and is still here, so there may be a chance for Mick, but.
Mick rode on the podium and he's still here.
Has he not gotten a podium?
I'm pretty sure he's like the longest been in the sport for, let me check, double check, but I'm pretty sure he's never been on the podium.
There you go. And so, and he's showing, he's fighting Lewis right now.
Yeah, as of twenty twenty four, Hulkenberg holds the record for the most Formula One career starts without a podium finish, two hundred and nine races. I have to say that I Googled, has Nico? And literally the first thing that came up is Hulkenberg ever been on that F one podium, so.
This as well. He needs to be on a Wired interview about him. But at the end of the day, I think Mick, Mick could get a chance. He's marketable. He can bring a lot of German money because there's still that Schumacher pride type to him.
Recent photo of him, he looked exactly like Michael. His hair was kinda like slicked back. He was wearing like his ninety S. I was like, that is Michael Schumacher. Like he is his twin, twin.
One of the best things, decisions that he's made recently is starting to date. Leila, because I think she is gonna be like that mastermind that like changes his marketability and is gonna, could get him back.
Like how Carmen changed, we are not talking about the unpaid labor of these girlfriends who are like completely changing. Like if we wanna talk about it, let's.
Carmen has a whole Tommy Hilfiger campaign now, so she's getting her back. She's getting her. Her financial, she's not being a financial consultant anymore and she is a wag getting those, that marketing.
But I think we are also talking about just in general, like Tom Brady would not have been Tom Brady without Gisele Bundchen. Have you seen his photos before?
Yep.
And I'm not, I'm not talking about the objective.
Confirmed she's a witch and she has done magic to help Tom Brady succeed in his career. You can Google that. You can Google that. Look it up.
Yeah, yeah, I've read those rumors. I prefer to talk about witchcraft in private, not in public, but like I get that. Completely.
Not us.
Not.
Not us.
But yeah, she could be a witch. That, that is helpful. See again, yeah. So it's women. Going back to my point. Is that women have been behind the marketability. Of drivers or any kind of athletes for a very long time. And.
Whether they're dating them or not, also unpaid labor of women creating. The marketability of F one. And we had this conversation about it recently, about like all of the unpaid labor that we do. To make F one exciting, to promote it, to get people involved. And what do we get for him? Zilch.
And I think there, that's another part, I think, for even racing forces. I've been creating content in around F one since twenty twenty. This, last year and this year were the first years we got some invites to come attend and see the race and have some. Meaningful opportunities to interact with people. But we've like created so much free value for the sport. And women do inherently do that. I think we've got a team of five. We don't make any money. I've been asked by people, hey, do you make any money? I'm like, no, uh, I can't make any money at my day job. I'm not allowed to take money. From other sources, so no, we don't make any money. But also. We went for some editor interviews early in the year. And my promise has been to all the women who work with us is meaningful mentorship and career coaching. As you're coming through it, get, be very clear on what you're doing and then just build from there. And we were also talking to a male editor. Of course, he's a professional. He does this for a living and we absolutely loved him. But he came back and said, well, to edit one episode a week, I would charge you twelve hundred dollars a month. And I was like, bro, where do you think we have this money from?
Yeah.
Where, where am I gonna like give you twelve hundred dollars? And that's why we didn't work with him. And our editor now, she's doing, of course, we're getting opportunities together. She understands the intrinsic value of this. Like project, but at the end of the day, eh, women are just doing so much more work for free. We're all taking up two or three jobs to get ahead in our career. And hey, there's an, there, it's true in every part of society, I think, which goes back to Leila.
Exactly. So Leila, thank you for your unpaid labor.
Thank you so much. Hope you're getting some, I mean, you're dating Mick Schumacher and I feel like that has to have some perks to it, so. Some value elsewhere, even if it's not monetary.
There you go.
All right, the one, the last thing I wanted to talk about today is the Eurovision Song Contest is currently happening.
Cool.
Well, it's over.
It's over.
And I don't, Abby, are you, are you familiar with what Eurovision is?
Yes, I heard Switzerland won.
Yes, yes, yes. Her name was, or their name was Nemo. They were a rapper. I didn't watch it this year. It's been clouded with con, there's so much controversy going on. So like if you wanna get into a deep rabbit hole, I recommend. Going down the Eurovision rabbit hole. It is rife with.
No, no, Racing Forces producer, Ally Wieland.
Yes.
Is a huge fan and I have been caught up on the controversies behind the scene.
Perfect, so you know. But regardless, so if anyone who's unfamiliar with Eurovision. It is the Eurovision Song Contest. Um, there have been a lot of really popular songs that have come out of it, namely. Um, Man of Skin in twenty twenty one and also everyone's absolute favorite ABBA. Being the winners um in the seventies, but every, every European country is invited to participate and they do like. Kind of like American Idol. America tried to do something similar a couple of years ago and it was just trash, so I hope they don't try it again.
I'm a fan of Deutsche Vision song contests, the Eurovision, but it's just for Germany to decide who is gonna be their person. We used to, that was a core curriculum in my German classes for seven years and it was always so fun.
Dead. Well, the running joke right now is that a couple of months ago, Charles Leclerc commented. On a post that was like Monaco's Eurovision like competition is currently open. And we're like looking for participants and apparently Charles commented and he was like, I'll gladly like. Participate, like I'll, I'll bring it home for Monaco. And so everyone is like, okay, where the fuck was Charles? He said that he was gonna do it this year. And I'm just like trying to envision. Charles being like, so sorry guys, I actually, I can't race right now because I'm competing.
What if this was though? Eh, I've been to Monaco, not during a race weekend because I felt like I'd go to pay pilgrimage to this. Small country in the south of Europe and it's such, I did get almost human traffic there, so that's a story for a different time.
Oh, not great.
Not great. Uh, but it's a country. That's so rich in history with racing. You can see that in the Monaco, like uh the Prince, the Grimaldi Family Museum. Or the Car Museum, whatever it's called, I forget the name. But the interesting part that you see in Monaco, it's all Charles, all hail Charles. And all hail Lewis. They have adopted him as one of their own in that country.
Well, now they're like, well, Lewis and Charles are gonna be.
Exactly.
Teammates, so like as transitive property would have it, he is also one of us.
Exactly, right? So like now they've become this one entity. And maybe that's the entry we need. Lewis sings and Charles on piano.
That would be iconic.
And Ferrari could sanction this team leave and bring back Gio for a race or something. Bring, I mean, yeah, bring back G, Gio and Ollie Bearman. They drive well.
They're cheering. Do fine. Ferrari's not winning races anyway right now, so like whatever, throw him in the car, it's fine.
I mean, Lewis already has honorary citizenship in Brazil, so I think that Monaco could probably do the same thing for him.
A hundred percent. He's knighted, so like, I'm sure, why wouldn't they want a knight to like be part of their, as their citizenship? Like I feel like it just makes sense.
Yeah, so I think that's the thing we need to put out in the universe, be like.
Yeah.
Oh my god, it's Lord, it's uh Sir Lewis and Lord Percival.
Exactly. Maybe they do a medieval, like you, you guys know what is that restaurant? It's called Medieval Times.
Duh.
The turkey leg.
Duh, we're familiar.
Yeah.
We're very.
Yeah, so like maybe it's the Renaissance outfits and Sir Lewis and Lord Percival like come up with a rap piano musical.
Nights of Monaco.
Nights of Monaco, yes. I think that's what.
It's like Knights of Round Table, but it's like Knights of the Round Circuit.
Yeah.
I'm thinking, I'm gonna noodle on it.
Yes. And so that is all I have on this. I think we need to probably get this to happen. You guys probably know people, just like send some texts and make this happen.
There's one thing we're gonna do, it's make this specific thing happen.
Specifically have your people call Lewis's people. Have your people call Lewis's people.
We'll be in touch.
People, yeah. Close with Lewis's people, that's for sure. Famously really, really close with Lewis's people, so we will be talking to them. You know who you are.
All right, on that note, I think we have wonderful visions of the future and manifests to.
Yes.
To kind of hold on to.
Yes.
But Abby, this has been so wonderful. I'm so glad we could finally do this. Hopefully this is not the last time that we were able to collaborate.
Hopefully not.
I know that, I know that to be true. That's just a, just saying it to be.
Thank you very much.
To say it, but I know that that's certainly, we're gonna be doing this a lot more, but uh as is tradition. Would like to sign off by just saying, we'll see you on the internet.
See you on the internet.
See you on the internet.
Bye guys.
Thanks so much for listening to this episode of TG one F, an F one podcast with Kate and Nicole.
If you like what you heard, don't miss out on the fun between episodes.
Keep up with the chaos on Instagram at Two Girls One Formula. That's spelled out T W O, girls, numerical one, formula.
And check out our website, twogirlsoneformula.com to shop cute, fan-made F one merch.
See you next week.
But like we said, in the meantime, we'll see you on the internet.